Okay, good morning. We'll call this morning's meeting to order. The first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
You've got a motion, second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens to be heard that... for things that are not on the agenda? Nothing here? Anything there?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We got some payments of bills and vouchers.
Move for approval.
Second.
We got a motion, second to pay the bills and vouchers. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we go right into the interviews. The two appointments, reappointments to the Buffalo Red River Watershed District Board. I guess with us, we got today, two people applying for it and... And I know with Jerry, Mr. Van Amberck, I don't know if you can come forward if you like, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Yes, good morning there. I really don't know if we need to interview Mr. ...
Mr. Chair, I would say that for Mr. Van Amberck, we can suspense with these questions and move for approval, and I would so move the appointment of Mr. Van Amberck.
A second.
We got a motion, second to approve Mr. Van Amberck for a reappointment to the watershed board. Did you have anything to say before we vote on that?
Well, I appreciate it. As I say, I've enjoyed my service on the board. It's been a challenge at times, certainly. I know I look like I'm 100 years old, but I'm only 65.
Oh, okay. A lot of years ahead of you then.
But no, if... No questions?
No questions for you, Mr. Van Amberck, if you're all set.
I have a quick comment, if I may. Yeah, so I just want to say thank you, Jerry, for being willing to do it again. And I mean, we've had a long relationship. The value you bring to the board and also your service on the Board of Soil and Water Resources brings a lot more to that board also. So why don't you tell us, how many years have you been on Buffalo Red?
How many years?
Yeah.
I think I started in '86.
Okay. And the Bowser Board, are you just finishing?
Bowser Board, I just completed 12 years there. They kicked me out this last month.
Okay, you're done with that now?
And, in fact, Todd Holman is the new chair.
Okay.
Now of that.
Yeah, all right. Well, again, thank you for...
Both of those have been very, very good learning processes, the watershed district board and as well as Bowser. And appreciate your words. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being on. And I'm making... Oh, excuse me.
If I can too. Jerry, I just want to echo what Paul said, and thank you for all your years. There's a project that I was very involved with, and you were instrumental when we found out the core couldn't do it, that Oakport project. You were very much involved, and I'm sure there's every homeowner up there right now who's landowner up there is extremely happy that that project was put in place. And I know you had some things to do with that as well, so.
That's quite a project. Many others of the watershed district.
Well, that was a $32 million project. Yes, you've sent them to me a couple times. Well, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You're back on, and thank you very much. Kurt. Kurt is on the planning commission, I know, so he's also...
Good morning, everyone.
Okay, Kurt, we got a few questions that we're going to ask you about the water board.
Sure.
If you don't mind, just to let the people know that you are on the planning commission. He's been on there. How long you been on that for?
Well, this will be... It'll be 12 years when I'm complete, and I got two more years to go, so 10.
Okay, very good, okay. Okay, just a couple of questions we're going to ask. What experience would you bring to the Buffalo Red River Watershed District Board of Managers?
Well, I was involved in several projects of drain tile and water cleanup down on... Paul and I mentioned it earlier, and down on County 21. When we've had some flood issues down there, I've been... I attended a lot of the meetings at that time to get that ditch cleaned out. So that's piqued my interest, especially with having Bruce help me put dike around one of the farmsteads. So I learned a lot through that process of working with the watershed board on both the drain tile project, the Whiskey Creek through ditch 20 to 221. And one of the things I didn't realize that I knew that some of the people didn't know is I asked if they knew how the ditches were named and numbered. And I asked the one on the watershed, and no, nobody knew what, how they got their names. I said, "Well, the one by my house is ditch 58 because it was put in 1958, and the one north was 38 because it was put in 1938." And that was some of the things that I learned from being on, involved there. And some of the Commissioners didn't realize that as well when they were put in. So I've always been interested in what's going on there.
I guess I learned something there, too, there. Okay, very good. So you gave us some version of it, but why do you want to be a watershed manager?
Well, as I grew up, water is one of those things that is always a hot topic and has been for many, many years. And even listening to the old timers talk about when that ditch was put in and how that all was figured out, it's always a hot topic. It's hard to make everybody happy. We all want to get rid of our water, and it's certainly got a natural flow that we trying to try to maintain. So I'm hoping to help that process along and keep the watershed running as well as it has, because we haven't had, you know, other than some of the project up north, we haven't had, the southern part, we haven't had some, any major issues. Things are getting done the way they should be in my area. I want to keep that going.
Very good, okay. What is your philosophy on managing drainage?
Well, the water's got to go, and there's a natural flow to it. And sometimes it has to go through my land, sometimes it has to go through somebody else's land. And so some people want it to be diverted around their property. And to me, the quickest and easiest way to get it off and into the flows of the systems of the ditches that we've set up already is the way to go. And so I've had neighbors that drain through mine. Well, it's pretty obvious that's the natural drain, and so that's how we get it there quicker. The quicker, the better, and the least damage to everyone.
Have you had a personal experience with the watershed board in the past? If yes, was it generally a positive experience? And how would you... Would that experience affect your service as a watershed manager?
Yeah, I drain tiled three quarters of land, and so that was a process, which took a little longer because one of my neighbors came out and said he had this paperwork that said that we're supposed to drain into this ditch, not that ditch. And so we had to have several meetings on that, and it was something that came up. There was an agreement. And so that took a little bit of doing. And of course, Bruce Albright was on there at that time to get that taken care of. We had to bury under a road. So all, and was working with, who's the engineering firm that... Wade Upsaw was the guy that helped Wade and Bruce Albright. So between putting drain tile in those three quarters and then the... I had to have a dike put around. I got a farmstead down on the Buffalo Rivers on the Comstock Road. We had to, we dyked that up. And so they were very instrumental in that process to make sure everything was done correctly. So that piqued my interest in being involved.
Very good, okay. I'll just have one final question, then we'll have the Commissioners see if they have some. The Clay County Commissioner has been in support of the diversion project. You've appointed to the board. How would you support efforts to achieve completion of this project?
Well, whatever we can do on the watershed to get that project completed as quickly as possible, I'd be supportive of that. That's been the philosophy of the county since it was, the project was approved. And that would be a philosophy we can hold true to the watershed.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I'm hoping that question can go away pretty soon.
Yes, exactly.
You know, but there are a couple of underlying issues that still need to be addressed. And I think the watershed just recently addressed one at the last meeting. And, you know, there's certain things that the permit requires, certain things can't be done until all lands have been acquired, and all those types of things. Well, anytime you put those types of stipulations on, there can always be exceptions. And I was glad to hear, I think, that the Buffalo Red Board made an exception at the request of the diversion authority at the last board meeting. So I just, I hope that you'll, as a board member, you would be open to some of those exceptions to the rules, so to speak, because those rules were implemented not knowing certain things, and the timelines and all those types of things associated with them. So I would hope you would be willing to...
Yes, compromise is the key to getting some of these things done. And when the project was developed, it was in a broad, in a broad context. And when, it doesn't always work that way when you get to individual landowners and individual situations. So I'd be open to being, learning about that.
And then the one other, the one other area that could end up being long-term, and I don't know that those discussions have been finalized in terms of, I think I know how the city of Moorhead will treat within the city in terms of the ONM, because they're going to be ongoing, you know. Well, actually, they're, some of the ONM is still the responsibility of the contractor for the next 25 years, or 30 years, I think, or whatever. But at some point in time, there's going to be the responsibility of those who benefited from the project to take over the ONM.
The maintenance of that, yep.
You know, and that's just like any other project that, when a project is created for the watershed district, there's a determined benefited area, and then it's those people who are assessed for that ONM. And, you know, and that's a little ways down the road yet, but, you know, that would, I don't know if that would be in the next, if they're going to determine that in the next three or four years or not, but...
Would that be using the viewer system?
Well, and again, I'm assuming, I'm making an assumption that the watershed might be asked to do that.
Okay.
I'm making a personal assumption here. I haven't, the diversion authority hasn't said anything or not. But it seems to me that because there has to be a process of collection, and the benefited area might be more than just within the confines of the city of Moorhead, city limits, that the viewer system type of thing that the watershed and the watershed law is in place would be the appropriate place to do that.
Yes, I agree with that, yeah.
You know, so that's why I bring these things up. I don't even know the timeline to that yet, because within the, within that construction project cost and that triple P partnership that's there is that the people who are building the system are responsible for the maintenance of it for... Now, I don't know if that involves the core portion or not, that, for example, our ditch, what is it, ditch reach four, I think it's referred to, that's the tieback levee, or dam on the Minnesota side. I'm not sure on the ONM and that, when that starts, but I have a hunch that the watershed might be asked to be involved with that.
Yep, and that would be something that I'd be willing to do. It's something that I wouldn't have known about had you not told me about it at this point in time. But yeah, that would be something that would appear to be under the purview of the watershed board and something they would be tasked with doing, or at least helping and assisting with it.
Well, they've got much more experience in that than, you know, especially because you're outside of any one government entity's jurisdiction.
Yep.
Unless it's Clay County. Clay County, I suppose, could do it, but...
Right.
I don't think we want to do it.
Dave, you got any questions? Paul? Okay. All right, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would move the appointment of Kurt Steppstadt to a three-year term on the watershed.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. I want to thank you two gentlemen for your interest in serving on these boards. With sometimes it's tough to find people, but... It'll be nice to have people out there for appointments all the time, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Okay, Justin, what have we got here? Purchase two walk and roll packers.
Yes, good morning, Board. So the first item I have is for the purchase of two new walk and roll packers. This is for units 142 and 146. So if you're not, for anybody that's not aware of what a walk and roll is, it's the packer that goes on the back of a motor grader. So we've been using them roughly since '08, '09. They've been, they've been really, really good. As we blade roads, it just helps tie all the material in. And the two that we're replacing, one is a 2009, and one is a 2012. So they have kind of outlived their life. We did get a quote for two of them. Units, our unit 142 would be $28,290, and unit 146 would be $27,465. The difference in price is one is a cat and one is a John Deere. The John Deere requires a spacer, whereas the cat does not. And the internal service fund is adequately funded. So with the purchase of these two, there is $71,880.07 between the two. So there's plenty of money. And I will, after that, I'll get to how I propose to sell them in a minute. I guess, do you have any questions on the units themselves?
It has been brought forward by the tracking committee.
Yep.
Well, makes practical sense. I'll move to make a motion to approve the purchase of the two walk and roll packers and sell the existing units, 142 W1 and 146 W1.
Second.
You've got a motion, second to approve the purchase of the walk and roll packers. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And as far as selling them, so what I would propose to do is there's a, there's a group email that lists pieces of equipment for sale. That's how we purchase message boards. We bought an old sign truck from MinDOT. It goes out to different government entities, so it goes out to all the counties and states. So I propose to sell them via that first for a minimum price of $7,500 for 142 and $8,500 for 146. By doing that, we would save about $3,000 in freight costs, because we would have to pay, if we trade them to this company, we'd have to pay to ship them to Montana.
Okay.
And the $7,500 and $8,500 are trade prices that I got from the company.
And those would meet the, our requirements of public...
Yep, I did talk to Lori about, I did talk to Lori about that. And if that's unsuccessful, then I would propose to sell on Minbid, like we have in the past as well, with those being the reserve prices.
Very good. We'll move on to your next project, then, the snow fence project?
Yes, the second item I have this morning is a letter of support for MinDOT. So they're applying for a federal grant. It's a carbon reduction grant for a snow fence project from Moorhead to Alexandria. And they're just requesting a letter of support. The letter of support that's in your packet is jointly signed by myself and the board chair. I think it's very evident the impact that snow fences had along the interstate and Highway 10. I just think the letter would be a good show of support from the county.
Is that those wooden fences that they're putting up on the side, or?
They look wood. They are like a flexible plastic. But it's, if you drive from Dilworth to Glendon, it's on the north side of the road.
Lot of slatted.
Yep.
Okay. And they're going to, they're going to do that from Moorhead to?
They're applying for fund. It won't be everywhere from Moorhead to Alexandria. There's different spots that they are susceptible to drifting and everything else.
I see there's one up by Barnesville somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yes, Paul?
I just, a quick comment on that. I've been, several presentations by MinDOT and these, and then when they first started them, you know, how we started with cornrows and different things. And there was, you know, I've been, especially when it started, very surprised how much these cost. Crazy expensive. However, maybe even want to give per foot. But the fact is, what it saves you and how it protects people and saves lives. I mean, it's a total payback.
And, yeah, this particular grant that they're applying for is a carbon reduction grant, because there is a bunch of studies out there that show how much less snow plowing you have to do if you have these fences.
Do you know what it is per foot now?
I do not.
I mean, it's substantial.
It is expensive, I do know that. But it is, even the standing cornrows, it's impressive when you see how much snow they actually trap.
Yep.
When they, when they install those, do they have a certain setback that they want to do? Do they end, do they end up having to get additional right-of-way when they do that, then?
Yep. So I think there's one spot between Dilworth and Glendon that does not have it. That's because of right-of-way.
Okay.
And then if they do the standing cornrows, they have a formula that they pay the farmer so much for crop damage and...
Okay.
I think there are always easements, though.
They are.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I shouldn't say it's, it doesn't necessarily have to be expanded right-of-way. It can be easements, yeah.
But there definitely is an impact. I mean, just the amount of snow is there much longer than it is anywhere else.
As a farmer or whatever, do they get paid for their land usage?
Yep.
Through the easement process. Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the letter of support for MinDOT's snow fence project.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second to approve the letter of support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, from that, we'll go into the budget. It looks like you got a few pages of budget here.
Yeah, so I'm here to present the highway department budget for 2024. I won't hit on every line, and if you do have a question on a specific line, feel free to ask it anytime. I'll just try to hit the high points. So our budget's comprised of four sections. 310 is maintenance, 320 is construction, 330 is administration, and 340 is shop. So I'll start first with maintenance. So for 2024, we estimated revenues using the past year's trends and what we're expecting for revenues for state aid based on the projections that we got a couple weeks ago. And just as an FYI, 10-310-5409 Townships and Cities. So you see that one's up quite a bit. That's the revenue that we get from the township maintenance contract, which is based on that five-year rolling average. And then on the expenditure side, on the very first item, you will see a new request for $102,003. So what that is for is that's for two additional maintenance workers. So over the past couple years, even since I've started at the county, we've kind of relied on part-time people in both the summer and the winter time. So in the winter, we have 11 motor graders and 11 trucks. So 11 different districts. The past couple years, we haven't been fully staffed. So when we've had big snow events, our maintenance supervisors had to sit in a plow, which is not what we want to be doing, as well as our sign foreman. So what I'm proposing to do is to add two additional drivers, so that would get us to 11, 11 truck drivers and 11 blade operators. And in turn, I'd be able to reduce my part-time budget by about $30,000. And I wouldn't have any fear on not being able to keep them busy in the summertime. When we start mowing, we do lose a bunch of our different patch crews, so we only have about three guys that can replace pipes and such. So we would be able to run a full patch crew in the summer, not just when we're not mowing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yep, thank you. Justin, you, you made the comment that you weren't fully staffed. Did you, did you not fully staffed or not adequately staffed?
So last year, we had two part-time snow plow drivers, whereas we should have had three. So we weren't able to fill those positions. So we had one in Barnesville and one in Holly for part-time drivers. The other, the shortage was covered by our sign foreman, which it's great that he's willing to do that. But obviously, in a snow event, you hit mailboxes, signs get hit. So we fell extremely behind in that category. And as well as our maintenance supervisor, whenever, if somebody had a vacation or something in the wintertime, he was always willing to step in a truck, too. Does that answer your question? 10-310-3107. So I did increase the overtime quite a bit. As you can see, this past winter, I mean, it seemed like it always snowed, or the wind was blowing on the weekends. I'm just trying to capture the overtime correctly. And then 10-310-6109, that is for on-call pay. So per the union contract, if we can put them on call on weekends. 10-310-6277. So that one is up about $6,000. So that is to account for the CDL policy that was passed by the board. So to date, we've actually utilized that program twice, and both are still employed, and it's worked really, really well. 10-310-6454, that one is up. So every, every other year is a boot year. So this current year is a boot year per the union contract. 10-310-6502, road materials. So I did increase that $90,000 up to $1,050,000. So this covers a lot of our gravel that goes onto the roads. So the reason I increased this one a little more than I have in the past is the past couple years, we've only gotten one competitive gravel bid. And if we weren't to get that, we probably wouldn't get gravel. So it's to cover, we have material in our 26 pit that needs to be crushed. So it's to put up a stockpile that, so in case that we don't get a bid, we have ample material on hand to where we can spread it ourselves. And then in flood events, we do utilize our own gravel to, to fix flood washouts and...
So when we crush our own gravel, like what you're proposing here,
Mm-hmm.
that, that pile then is reserved for us, right?
Correct.
No other contractor can come and have access to that.
Yep. And part of the material that's in the 26 pit actually came off of the Cassau 1 grading job. So it was the old pavement and gravel reclaimed together. So also, per state aid rules, that has to go on a county road, because there was gas tax dollars used on that.
I know, as I've been going to township meetings, they're all asking, why can't we get gravel from the township? And I know you explained it to them, that because of DNR, that we can't expand our gravel pit.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know which...
And that, that's the 108 pit. That's in Keent Township. The...
Yes.
That one, we're very, very restricted on where we can move.
Want to protect the butterfly, definitely.
Yep.
One of my prime interests.
10-310-6509, traffic supplies. So this covers both safety equipment and all of our signs. So I did up that $5,000. So what we've been kind of doing with this line item is when we can, at the end of the year, we've been trying to buy blinking stoplights or, or stop signs, sorry. And we bought a couple speed radar signs last year as well. So it's just trying to capture increased costs and trying to make safety improvements where we can. 10-310-6566, roadway maintenance costs. I did go up $50,000 on that one. So we have an aging road infrastructure on, this year alone, when we had those blowouts, blowouts on Cassau 11. So those three repairs alone costed 75 grand. So it's just, just trying to capture what we actually spend and be prepared if there is anything major that does happen. Weed and brush control, 10-310-6567. So we work each year with soil, soil and water to identify all the different road ditches that need to be sprayed. Obviously, chemicals getting more expensive, so we're just trying to make our dollars go as far as we can. And then the last one I want to touch on is 10-310-6807. So that is the turnbacks within the city of Moorhead, the Moorhead Street allotment, town road, gravel tax. And just as an item of note, this is the second to last payment for 40th Avenue. That's just, just under $400,000. So 2025 will be the last year. Any questions on the maintenance side?
We'll move on, I guess.
320 is construction, so bridge bonding. We do have a, we do have two major structures on the bridge bond waitlist. And with the bonding bill, I do anticipate those getting funded, so that's why that one is up. bonding bill, I do anticipate those getting funded, so that's why that one is up. And then municipal construction is up from last year. We didn't spend anything from the Kasaw Municipal, so nine hundred thousand is for this year, five hundred thousand goes to the Eleventh Street Underpass, and then four hundred thousand for a project within, on Kasaw Forty-five. Expenditures, we're relatively flat on this side. One of the bigger items to note is the engineering consultant technical service. So last year, I upped that to a hundred and fifty thousand, and I kept it flat this year, just trying to capture what we're spending. And with the bridge replacement on Kasaw Fourteen, there will be some consultant fees on that one. Ten-three-twenty, sixty-two-seventy-seven, training. So I did go down a little bit in this one. Last year, I up, or it was a little bit higher, just because we had another employee become a certified bridge inspector. And then on the bottom, construction costs are basically in in and out with, in in and out with the revenues. So from year to year, depending on how much construction we have, it can vary quite a On the administrations, I guess, any questions on the construction side?
Yes. Mr. Chair? So can you tell me where the, where in your budget the wheelage tax shows up as revenue?
Yes. Municipal, city wheelage.
But that's not revenue, though.
That's, that's on the expense.
Yeah.
I want to know on the revenue side. I, I don't see where, where the wheelage tax revenue dollars are...
I'm looking. Can you tell me what...
Yeah, so a number of years ago, the county implemented a wheelage tax through, that was allowed by state legislature. And you could, I think it would, allowed you to go up to, at the time, was fifteen or twenty dollars per vehicle per year. And right now, in Clay County, we have a wheelage tax that every time, it's ten dollars per year. And so, so when that's all collected, you know, that's a, that's a county revenue source that obviously deals with roads and bridges to help fund that type of stuff. But just, you know, just briefly, Paul, too, what we, what we did with that, too, then is, when we implemented that, we wanted to be sure that a portion of that went to all of our communities. We didn't have to do that, but, so there's a portion of it that goes to Barnesville, there's a portion of it that goes to Dilworth and the city of Moorhead. That's what that is.
I mean, every time you buy your taps, there's a ten-dollar fee on there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Most, most counties do have it, I think. And we did, we did that in place of, there's some counties that also have the ability to implement a local sales tax for roads. And I think Otter Tail County, for example, I think has a one percent sales tax that they use, but...
I believe Becker County does, too. So I, I don't, off the top of my head, know where that comes from, but I will find that. I know it's...
Well, I hope we can, I hope that's new money we can add on here, that things look better.
Yeah.
Because it is revenue we get.
Yep.
And I don't, I don't know, because when I, as I look at this, the, that two-point-eight million, if I can go, just go back on the...
Yep.
Three-ten, fifty-two-seventy-five, regular maintenance revenue, you have two-point-eight million there.
Yep.
Where's that?
So that's money that we get from the gas tax for maintenance of Casas.
Okay.
And then municipal maintenance is the money that we get from Kasaw, from, or from the gas tax for maintenance within cities.
So what's the four-point-two million, then, on, under constru, highway construction?
So that is the state aid allotment for construction.
Okay.
Get both maintenance and...
You get both, okay, that's right, okay. I just wanted to make sure that, and it's not incorporated into either of those, that wheelage tax?
No.
Somewhere along the line, there's a revenue line item that we could...
And I, I don't, I don't want to be incorrect in this, but my gut is telling me ten-three-ten, fifty-four-oh-nine, which is Townships and Cities.
I, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
There is a Townships and Cities line, so I know that covers the maintenance contract, but I don't know...
Is that the seven-forty-two?
Yep.
I don't know.
I'm, I apologize, I didn't, I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Okay, you can, and maybe that's it, I don't know.
Okay. I, I will get an answer for you as soon as I get out of here, though.
No problem, thank you.
Yes, any other questions on the construction side? We'll jump to three-thirty, which is our administration. So Highway Admin covers our office manager, our admin assistant, county engineer, assistant county engineer, and our highway accountant. So on the revenue side, it's overweight permits, moving permits, and then miscellaneous revenue. So on the expenditure side, ten-three-thirty, sixty-two-sixty-one, I did increase that, so that's our fee that we pay for the state auditor. That's just trying to capture actual costs. Ten-three-thirty, sixty-two-seventy-one is other professional expenses, so that's our cost accounting software and our RT Vision, which covers all of our permitting, and One Office, which covers our construction documenting. And then ten-three-thirty, sixty-six-oh-four, equipment over five hundred is down from last year, so we had a new request last year to purchase a new printer. So that one's obviously down significantly. Any questions on the administration side? The final part of my budget is shop, so that's three-forty. So the one-line item for miscellaneous revenue, so that's the, what we collect from the joint facility from both Mendat and the city of Moorhead. Ten-three-forty, sixty-one-oh-seven, overtime, so that covers the overtime of our mechanic. So if we are working on the weekends, we do require either our shop foreman or our mechanic to be there in case there is breakdowns. That's just trying to capture what we actually spend. Otherwise, it's relatively flat. One item of note, ten-three-forty, sixty-three-oh-two, equipment repair and maintenance, so I did up that, just trying to capture what we actually spend. Obviously, repair, we had a lot of breakdowns this last year, and parts are expensive. This also covers cutting edges, so obviously, the more we plow, the more cutting edges we go through, and those have been extremely difficult to get, and they are more expensive, And then I am down a little bit in fuel, so I'm sure, as all of you noticed, prices at the pump have come down since I was here last year. So I did go down fifty thousand dollars in fuel, just trying to capture the costs. And then one other item that did go up is radio equipment, so that's up a thousand dollars to cover rising costs. So we purchased two new radios each year, and we're just trying to get a radio in each piece of our equipment. Any questions on the shop side? I guess, any questions overall, that covers my budget?
I have one. If I may. So, Justin, how does it work? For instance, like in a flood declaration?
Mm-hmm.
My memory is here, you reach the certain, certain threshold of damage, then you can request for funds, right?
That's correct.
And, and the money you receive on that is you provide an expense and they pay that?
That's correct. Yep.
And so what I'm, as you make the budget, is there any reflection, or, or do you just go back to last year's budget?
So we don't, yeah, we don't...
You understand what I'm getting at?
Yep, so we don't budget for FEMA expenses, so if we do receive any FEMA assistance, it shows up as miscellaneous revenue. Obviously, it does cover a lot of our overtime and material costs, but on a year-to-year basis, we do not budget for a flood.
And then, on, on the same way, does the state ever help on years when there is bad snowfall? I mean, or it's only in the way of flood? In other words, is there other type of...
Not that I've, not that I've ever been aware of.
Okay.
I know they have done some emergency declarations when there's been some really bad blizzards.
Yeah.
But as far as funding to help plow snow or anything, I've never seen any assistance in that aspect.
Any other questions? Now, Justin, that was a, I mean, you have a big budget there to go through, and I appreciate the thorough knowledge you have on your budget.
And I, I do apologize, I didn't know where the one item was. I will...
I think you're prob, I have a hunch that that's where it is at, it's in that Townships and Cities.
Mm-hmm. But I will send you an email when I get out of here, you know?
But it, the only, the only thing, if that's where it's at, if there, if the revenue is going under that one, then the payouts should also go under that same one.
That's, that's the only part of me that doesn't think it's in that one.
Yeah, because, you know, because the payout, the payout, I, you know, when you go to that sixty-six-thirty-one...
Mm-hmm.
That one, it, it talks about county wheelage tax in there, that's, I'm assuming that's where we pay that money back out.
So actually, so if you go under unallocated, which is the last page, so if you go to ten-eight-oh-five, fifty-ninety-one is wheelage tax city. I think I answered my own question on where it is.
Okay, there, there's, there's the revenue showing.
What page is that?
It'd be on the last page.
It's...
Under unallocated.
It's the last page of his report. So I'm assuming...
You almost think that'd be a surplus entrance for wheelage tax.
It should be in one of his, instead of unallocated, it... Because that makes me wonder if, if the wheelage tax that's collected, if, I wonder if the way it has here, we keep the three-sixty-nine revenue and we pay out the, or the cities get the, I don't know, it's both revenue to us, but I, that one is confusing. We can follow up on that later, Justin.
It did print out what our actual fund balance is as far as, as of twelve-thirty-one, twenty-two, but I don't have what was collected in twenty-two. I just have what each city's balance is.
Yeah, so maybe, can you explain that for Paul? Because I know, so, you know, we talked about the wheelage tax that's collected, and, and we offer so much per year to each community, but they're allowed to bank that if they don't have a project that...
Yep.
Or is it right of way, right, Justin?
Yep, so, so seventy percent of the wheelage tax goes to the county, thirty percent goes to the cities, so there is three different levels of funding based on that thirty percent for the cities. So cities with a population over fifteen thousand will receive fifty-one percent of that thirty percent, which obviously, that's just Moorhead. Cities with a population larger than a thousand but less than fifteen thousand will receive seven percent of the funds given in an, in an available year. And then cities with a population less than a thousand will receive three-point-five percent.
And, and really, what that means is that money is allocated and dedicated.
Mm-hmm.
They, there's not checks sent out to them every year, but...
No.
One, one city might want to just build that fund till it reaches ten thousand or something like that, and be able to use it to pay for a project.
Mm-hmm.
Do the townships get anything from that, or?
Not from the wheelage. But the townships do get town road from the gas tax, which the cities do not get that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I did just forward that policy to you guys on your laptops, so...
And I think you, you, Chris Martin actually must be listening to us, because he also sent an attachment that shows all of the counties within the state, whether they implemented a wheelage tax or, and what dollar amount. And there's some that don't, but they're, but they don't, they don't mention that they probably have in its place a sales tax. Thank you, Chris Larson, or Chris Martin, for sending that to us.
And I guess, as far as like my total revenues go, obviously, they can vary a lot from year to year, just based on federal funding, if we receive LRIP grants, bridge bonding, so it can, can be deceiving when you look at the overall revenue side, just for, obviously, if it's our turn in the ATP STIP, or if we received any bridge bond
So overall, what, your budget go up or down?
So I did actually, I reached out to Lori yesterday, and just in case this question was asked, so the over, the total overall levy amount, so I'm up four-point-five-seven versus last year. And if the new requests were approved, I'd be up about six-point-one percent.
So it's four, four-something without...
Yep, that's correct.
New requests.
Because, yeah, if you look at the overall sheet, it's kind of deceiving if you look at the percentage, that's why I reached out and got that number.
Any other questions? No, thank you for your thorough...
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, you know, as we do these, and maybe for, for Steve, too, I think, is we, I really appreciate what, when they see these increases, we're, those increases are based on last year's budget. And I, you know, and I think as we get closer to establishing our preliminary levy, I think we also need to take a close look at, not only are we comparing it, but, but what areas actual might be different than budgeted? Because they're, they're two different things.
Yep.
You know, and, and in reality, comparing to what actually happened is, it's a significant thing to be looked at. If you didn't, if you didn't spend two percent of your last year's expenses, and you're, and you're saying you have a five percent increase over last year's budget, you really got more like a seven or eight percent increase, you know, over what actually was used. So, but, so I think we need to be looking at, at actual as well. I know Lori does incorporate some of that into her deals later on, but thank you for...
Okay, with that, we're going to move on to Joe, with, I guess, approved geotechnical evaluation and topographic survey. Some big words there.
Yeah. Morning, Mr. Chair, Board members. So I'm here today to, to, I guess, essentially give you an update of this. These two, these are two different services that we usually do when constructing the building, the first two steps. And what we have done here is worked with the Building and Construction Committee to get preapproval for this, since we had, we had a, kind of a tight deadline here to get this, this information to our architects. So I've gotten approval to do this, so, so straight, right up front, it is done already, but the committee felt that we needed to keep you guys updated. So I've gotten a price from geotechnical evaluation for, for Ron Intertek at seven thousand four seventy-five, and that's, that's basically the drilling down and testing the dirt. It's information that our structural engineers need that are working with architects. So that is already done, it was done, I believe, a week and a half ago now. And then a topographical survey is also needed through Houston Engineering, is currently working on this right now as well. So total cost of this is ten thousand nine seventy-five. This is budgeted in our original budget with the design costs, so I'm asking approval to approve this.
This, Mr. Chair, and this, this is one of those things that Commissioner Mojo and I were given the authority, because, you know, we didn't want to have to hold up the whole project to have those done, so that's...
Very good, okay. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd move for approval of this expense.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second to approved expense with Brown InterTech, 7475.
Yeah, can I ask one, just one que, so the results of the borrowing?
Those are, have not been back yet. They shouldn't be back any day, though. So, yep.
That, that's the one that's of interest.
Whether we have water problems or not.
Well, or some other, you know, some other problem that.
Exactly.
Can.
Yeah, they, they, once those results, they were supposed to get back to me and then directly over to Ryan Weber from Clay McCarthy, so.
Can you, can you, can you maybe just, once you get those results, send out something to us to let us know if there was significant findings or not?
Yes, yep, I'll update you on that, and then, Mr. Chair, I know you'd mentioned 7,475, it's a total of 10,975, so, one test was 7,475, and the survey is 3,500, so.
I didn't know with the, that survey, was that included in the, in the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, it was, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that.
Oh, that's good.
Okay, that did include both figures, okay?
Yep.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to give us?
No, I, that's it for me, so.
Okay. I think we did, didn't we vote on it? I think we did. We didn't vote on?
Mr. Chair, we, we didn't, we just got the motions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we go into budget presentation for recorder, Kim?
I'm here to, to present to you my 2024 budgets. I'll start off with my revenues. I do, I did factor in a decrease for our real estate recording for next year. We are down more than anticipated this year, so I took that into a factor for 2024. The total for revenues is a decrease of about nine, 8.98%. Does anyone have any questions for me on the revenues portion of it?
So what, what causes the decrease, just?
Our number of recorded documents is down, we are not seeing the amount that we normally would. I had kind of factored in for a normal recording year, and it is down a lot less, so I kind of figured that trend might continue into 2024 as well.
Okay. I mean, has that been coming down every year, or is that just a?
No, this is quite slow, and it is the same trend as the rest of Minnesota is seeing too, everything's down about 30% for our number of recordings.
I mean, yes, that will stabilize at this, I, my view, I think it's kind of the new normal, if you will, at least for a while, a few years, but I would think it'll be stabilized. I, I don't see this, maybe I'm wrong, decrease year after year after year.
Yeah, I think it, yeah, I mean, we're still seeing new plots come in and, and things being recorded, so I think.
We certainly have growth in the area.
Yes, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to my expenses, the top portion there is all just salary costs of that 5.71%. And then down below, I only had two line increases, they were each just for $500, that was for travel and expense and office supplies, and so it's such a small line item that it took that 12.5%, that 500 of it was quite a big jump. The equipment fund, that's down 5%, that's just an in and out, so whatever I show on my revenue, I show as an expense, that's a separate fund that's kept for my office. So overall, the increase for expenses is just 0.66%.
What goes up in office, I mean, in office supplies?
The cost of our envelopes has gone up, our security paper that we print our birth and death records on had a fee increase this year, and anticipate our other security paper that we use for marriage certificates is probably going to have a fee increase by next year.
Okay, thank you. So overall, your budget's pretty much staying the same now? Are you looking at 66.66% increase?
Yep.
I think we got a new letter in our budget.
Any other questions for me on the?
I just want to go back to the point we were talking about before with the decrease. So do you think that 30% was that big in Clay County also?
Yeah, we are, you know, in 2020 and 2021, we saw record numbers of recorded documents. I had anticipated for this year that we would kind of go, be what we were pre-pandemic, and it is, it is down quite a bit. Just for 2023, we're down 1,500 documents compared to a average year before COVID.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Jacobson, talking about your budget for planning and zoning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, yep, here to talk about the 2024 planning and zoning budget, so like Kimberly, I'll start with revenues. You know, in the past two years, we've had kind of an estimated projection of revenues, and we've far exceeded those every single time, just with the amount of building and construction going on. At the beginning of this year, it was kind of looking like maybe that wouldn't be the case, but really, the past couple months, things have kind of picked up, so I think we've issued a pro, close to 115 building permits already this year. Might not be as high, just because there's not as many new homes, a lot more accessory buildings and things like that, so, but we're on track there. Still getting our, our shoreline grant from the state, I think that might actually go up a little bit, but haven't set up, set a number on that, it wouldn't be significant at all, and we're still getting that riparian aid as well from the state. In terms of expenditures, there's been a couple of increases, looking at the per diem, as you know, in addition to our staff, we also have our planning commission and board of adjustment, and you as a board had graciously increased their, their per diem last year, and so this is taking into account if we had full attendance at every single meeting, as well as we've had some special subcommittees and things like that, and so making sure that they're compensated for that, especially with our, our ordinance update, there'll be a couple of meetings with that, that could go into early 2024. Printing and publishing has gone up as well, just because postage has gone up, so sending out notices, public notices, things like that, and then also just our publishing fees and our papers has, has also gone up as well. And then travel and expenses, that's, that is also another item that's, that's gone up, and just with the gas prices, as well as we've, last year, we took some of our planning commissioners and, and board of adjustment members to a couple trainings as well, and so accounting for that and hoping that they, they continue to take advantage of, of those trainings. So overall, kind of looking at about a 4.27 increase from last year. Any questions for me at all?
No, on travel committees, what, what is that, we, discontinued travel committees?
We've never spent anything there, or I haven't, since I've been, been here, so I just assumed, let's move it somewhere else.
Very good, okay.
And I, yep, was thinking of you when I deleted that.
You got one item in there, you're thinking of.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, the other, the other professional services, is that for the, what is that, what's the 60,000 for?
The very bottom. Oh, that is our share of the riparian aid that would go to the watershed district? So we send about, yeah, 60,000 every year of that.
Of the 160 that?
Yep.
Yep.
You have a comment on that, Steve? Okay, any other questions? 4.27, that's, you're not the winner yet, so.
It's hard to beat Kimberly.
Yeah. No, very good.
Something to strive for.
Exactly.
Of course, we're not done with the budget yet either, so, probably gift there yet. No, thank you very much, Matthew.
Thank you all.
With that, we go on community reports, Dave, you want to start us out today?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 12th, I virtually attended the Northwest Emergency Communications Board joint meeting. A lot of general business handled. One, one just kind of note of interest that we got from Brian Zastopol, our systems administrator, there's been an uptick in false 911 calls from cell phones. Apparently, there's been an update in software that has created the situation where if you're driving and you drop your phone, it'll send a 911 call in saying you've been involved in a serious accident. There's a couple other quirks in there where 911 calls come up. At this point, Android is reversing the update to pull that, those components out of the system, so it won't happen. Apple has declined to do so. The Attorney General's actually gotten involved and has requested Apple to do this, but it is really, has created a swing in 911 calls that are occurring under, under certain circumstances. People are advised to please, if you get a call on your phone and it is from 911, please respond to it and don't let it just keep ringing, or if you see that your phone has gone into 911 mode, remain on, pick it up, remain on the line, and tell them it was a false 911. It takes a lot of dispatcher time and a lot of time, particularly for deputies and troopers who have a huge area to cover, to try and locate people when this occurs, so if you see 911, you're not going to get in trouble, just hang on the line and let the dispatcher know what's going on. A lot of technical discussions, these joint meetings involve the, the technical side as well as the board, so that is pretty much, other than serious discussions about working with the, as I discussed last time, working with the service providers and trying to get legislation updated in our, in our statute for emergency communications, and I've been voluntold to be part of that committee, so I'll be making calls this week to get on the, the communication line with the State Emergency Communication Board to, to try and do something about that, but that'll be coming up in, in future. On the 13th, myself and Commissioner Campbell attended the Red River Regional Dispatch Center Board of Authority meeting. The vice chair, Shelley Carlson, Mayor Carlson, requests to step down in her position as vice chair. The vice chair term precedes a term as chair of the Board of Authority, and she will be chair of the diversion authority next year as well, and she wanted to try and head that off before it presented itself, because both of those committee assignments would be an awful lot put on plate as somebody's an active mayor and has a regular job as well. So I was voted in to finish her term as vice chair, and I will be chair next year of the, of the diversion authority.
Dispatch.
Or dis, dispatch. Shelley will be chair of the diversion authority. And I do, do we need to, Steve, you mentioned, do we need to have something?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, we'll add that to your, to your committee assignments.
We talked, at this point, the building site proposal, there's some, there are some adjustments that staff is making, primarily to cut down the size of the parking lot, that's an expense they think that is, is not necessary to the extent that, that it's been done. They also have taken core samples, and discussions are underway with the city of Fargo as to whether it's going to be leased, or gifted, or, or how we're going to work out the use of a Fargo property. Again, this is out of joining their emergency services training building. Just, it came up in, in discussions on a meeting I'll mention here in a minute, but just for general populate, or general knowledge of the public, and for some of our communities that are interested in this, there is some real effort not to overbuild this building, but it's not impacting on the actual dispatch center plans for dispatch center floor. We're going to have the same number of terminals. One of the major points for Clay County has been, we have our own dispatcher, and the holdup on that is, the current dispatch center is not big enough to put in that many consoles. There will be that many consoles in the new dispatch centers being constructed, so our, our needs and our concerns are being considered in the design changes that are being made here. The cutbacks are things like parking lots, or the size of offices, or the size of conference rooms, so.
Sure, can I, can I just, you know, I think part of that too, when, when you said that we'll have the same number of consoles, we, we have also, there's been incorporated in their training room areas, though, they, we've even been told that if need be, if there was a, a need for additional, those training ones could actually be used as regular consoles as well.
Yes.
You know, so I, so I, you know, and, and that's part of the whole future demand growth issue, right?
Yeah, and, and one of the things, and I think last week's tragedy, last Friday's tragedy, with the murder of a Fargo police officer and two officers seriously hurt and an innocent civilian, it's times like that that you see what kind of dispatch center we have, and I, I really would be amiss if I didn't point out, number one, the spectacular response that those dispatchers did, under incredible pressure. They brought, they channeled a good response in a chaotic situation, and at, at points like that, they need a dispatch center, as we just talked about, where you can bring people in, you're setting up a, a command post out in the field, you need to have a separate console and strictly send people over there, we're going to have those capacities and enhanced capacities once this is built. So this is a, when you have critical incidents, you need to have the, the ability to respond, and that doesn't just count for situations occur in our urban areas. When we have floods, when we have major fires, when we have situations anywhere within the, the two counties, we're going to have the capacity to put dispatchers on there who can focus solely on that matter and make sure nothing gets by. So this is, this is going to be a good, good thing for us when this center is completed. On the 14th, I went out to Clay County Fair on, for Government Day. As always, it was fun. It's great to get out and see, you know, our, our people, our citizens, and see our staff. Interaction with staff and the fairgoers was really a good thing to see. So that was, that was a good day until the, the word came in on the events in Fargo. And then yesterday, myself and Commissioner Campbell and County Administrator Larson and County Attorney Melton attended a MOU joint dispatch center meeting at Varnsville, and we discussed the contract that we have with the rural cities. Every year, we, we collect a fee for their share of the Red River Dispatch Center operation, and we discussed that, and at this point, a lot of things still going on, a lot of desires to have the county take over as far as those expenses are concerned, and we're going to talk about it and have a transition period. It does sound like the cities are going to sign three-year MOU with us, and we'll have, be able to work. And we'll have, be able to work on any transitions that need to take place during that time. And we assure, there were assurances made that we would, that we will look at this.
Where'd you say the dispatch center? I missed that. Where's, where's it going to be located?
It's going to be in the industrial park out in the north part of Fargo, right adjoining the property that the, their emergency services training building is.
Public safety.
Or public safety building. And it's right across, if you know where Cardinal Glass is.
Okay.
It'll be right out in that area, across the street from them.
Thank you.
And that completes my report.
Okay. Paul?
There we go. On the last Monday, on the 11th, I had Morehead City Planning. Couple of things of interest, there was the Armory Event Center on, on Center Avenue there, Ninth, or whatever. So Jim Bertram owns both the Armory and right next to it, another building. And they vacated what was a street from the city. And now that will be taken over by them as vacationer property. And they'll, they'll use it for parking, normal parking and also events that will kind of grow outside from the event center from time to time. And then the other thing was the Holiday Gas Station on 34th. Did another final plat to the property to the east of them and for future semi-parking. Get more trucks in that area. So kind of down the area, 34th as, down by Essentia in that area. So those two were approved with some discussion. The next day, Tuesday, over at the Historical and Cultural Society, I had my first finance meeting. Appreciate the background they brought to it. It was a good orientation for me to see kind of their collective past work and goals on their finances. So it was a good total review. We also then did, obviously, reviewing for the board meeting, which is this week. One of the goals was, they've gotten really low for a little while. And there has been a lot of money that has come in through pandemic money that really made the financial position of the, of the, the society pretty good shape. So anyway, they have a six-month reserve, which was their goal, and keep it at that place. We, we'll be looking forward and keeping track of our finances close. As next year, we'll be renewing a lease or getting a new lease with City of Morehead for the space that we're in. And it's a good place to be. Works along well with the, the ship and, you know, the center, the whole thing. And now that community theater is there, that brings, it brings in about 30,000 people a year. So it's a good place for them to be. And there'll be a small staff, staff change. Mark Peal will be retiring at the end of December, and he's been there for years and years. And so we'll be working with a interim replacement and then on, and then have a job search. And we'll see where that goes as the year continues. So that was the main thing about that meeting. Then on Thursday, I was part of the monthly board meeting with the Small Water Conservation District. Just a couple of things to point out. We have, Sharon Lee had been our federal partner with NRCS. And she'd been in that office for 24 years. And so when we as a, you know, a county or state do a lot of projects, we coordinate along with our federal partners. And Sharon had been part of that for many years. New person has been assigned. His name is Travis Stone. He'll be an interim. And while they go through a job search, and I think there's a, a chance that Travis may even apply for that position. And he was there, introduced himself, seems very good attitude and has good background, I think. It remains who we get, but certainly will, they're a little, they're an integral part of the work that we do. It was SWCDs. Kevin will be with us August 1st to provide his budget. Just one of the comments I'll make ahead of it is with the legislation that was passed, their funding source, you know, for their capacity, their work for their office and the work that they do, their, their, their staffing, obviously, great partnership here with the county. But they also, anyway, their funding is taking the aid, the money that they get is now coming out of the Department of Revenue rather than just through legislative action and what, drawing that money out of the Clean Water Fund. And anyway, and I really have to see that. We worked hard for that for about six years. And past Representative Mark was a big piece of this. Anyway, Clay County will go from 117,000 up to 179,000. So it was a big jump that comes through that. And with that, new responsibilities. So they're able to add staff. So they, Craig, you know, retired and there are two staff that have jumped in to, jump in to create the capacity to, you know, do new projects and funding that has come in through the state and new state grants, as well as one watershed, one plan that you talk about a lot, Frank. And, and they're just growing projects going throughout the state. So he'll be with us presenting ours first. Then Friday, I too was at Government Day. I was, I enjoyed those hours. And they were down there and, and saw a lot of people, you know, that hadn't seen for a while, growing up in the Saban community. The next day, I was at the fair again for another four hours. And that was with the Historical and Cultural Society. I manned the one-room Humboldt Schoolhouse for four hours. And, and I thought, oh my gosh, what am I going to do for four hours here? And I was amazed how many people came in and the great conversations I had with just a lot of people. I mean, from all over the county, people from out of state and the interest that was. And it just, you know, I'm old enough to remember this stuff. I didn't go to a country school, but my brother and sister did. And I was the first year in the Saban, so I didn't have that experience. But this was a Humboldt Schoolhouse. So it was a school that was at one time about five miles east of, of Barnesville. And it started right around 1915. And then it was in operation until the 1950s. So a long time. And then the next day, I was back again helping out the extension service. And I gave out a couple of awards. Won the Farmer of the Year, DeMarvin Barb, Askew Guard, who are Askew Guard Organic Farms, for their great work and community work that they both provide, along with their daughter and son-in-law. And, and then also, there was another award given, a certificate to Matt and Rochelle Ness, another farm operation near the Comstock area. And they are receiving the NDSU Harvest Bowl Award. So we recognize them also. Anyway, three days to prayer. I hadn't had that for, since I was in 4H. Anyway, it was a good time, great weather, and very well attended. Thank you.
Okay. Kevin?
Before I start, I, I see that we got a response from Lori on the highway issue that, just an update that townships and cities revenue line is the source of the wheelage tax. So that's 742,000. The expenditures tied to that are, are the 6630 and 6631. And right now, it's projected that we will pay out 527,335 between those two. That difference then, of course, is that number that I talk about where some of those dollars get banked. I'm assuming that that's what that, that is. These are known projects that were for 2024 that are going to pay it out of that wheelage tax. And the remainder stays in a fund for future opportunities. Okay. So with that, and I'll go into my reports. On July 11th, we had a Highway Tracking Committee meeting. We had representatives of, help me out, township.
Spring Prairie.
Spring Prairie Township, thank you. And members of the, how to write colony there? Terricon.
Terricon and Houston.
And Houston Engineering, they were there talking about 70th Avenue and the problems that exist on how do, how do you upgrade that road? And, and we basically told them what, you know, the issues are in terms of the county and, and what those processes are. And, and the, the idea of that turning over to a Cassau Road, we basically told them were slim to none, just based on what we have available and how that all works and turnbacks. So. But we did, you know, we talked about different opportunities. You know, I talked to them about that Statute 429, which is a statute that allows local governments to implement projects through special assessment. So those are, I mean, just thoughts for them to be considered. They were, I think they were, you know, they were satisfied with what they heard from us. We, you know, we had that conversation with them about the importance of that road being up to date. Because we do maintain that road on behalf of the townships. And, and if it's, if it's not in good order, we heard about damaging or wrecking our cutting blades and those types of things. So they are, they're going to try to keep up on that. We had a little bit of a discussion, further discussion about MOU. The MOU with the Diversion Authority that's, will be coming before us at some point in time. I asked for additional information regarding not only, there's a lot of focus on what goes on south, but we also have issues to the north that were presented a long time ago in terms of certain roads needing to be elevated to, to be able to be still passable during 100-year events. And so we just want to make sure that those are still included in that MOU. The two walk and roll packers we've discussed, that's, we took care of that today. There was a request for a four-way stop at the intersection of Cassau 11 and 26. And, you know, there was a, unfortunately, a fatality there that had occurred not too long ago. And so there was a request to put a four-way stop there. And it, the, if you understand MINDOT and how things work, there's, they're under, it's under a warrant system. In other words, you have to have a certain amount of incidents that would require warranting something that being done. And at this point in time, even from the county standpoint, it does not meet the warrants. So the likelihood of that happening right now probably isn't there. But there is significant issues there. There are the stop signs, that there's the blinking, you know. So there, we're doing everything that we can in that regard. It was just a very unfortunate incident that happened. And then we'll be getting the five-year plan will be coming to us soon. On the 13th, we did have the regional dispatch. It was probably, I think it's the shortest meeting I've ever been to in the history of all my meetings. The, the really, the only, the really only thing that, action that was taken was putting Dave in as the Vice Chair of that committee for the remainder of this year. Then on yesterday, as Dave mentioned, we attended a meeting with the small cities in regards to their portion of the funding for the dispatch center. There was quite a bit of discussion. And, and the, the end, the end result was, is, you know, I think they got some of their questions answered. They still have many. I, I think their opinion is, is that, that, you know, that should probably be faded, faded out at some point in time. You know, if you, if we look at all of that, it's, it's, it's an incredible takeover. It would be an incredible takeover from expenditure standpoint on the part of the county for not only the small cities, but then you'd have to, you would also have to look at Morehead. And, and so, you know, anyway, we, we got past that for now. And I think that, that all the cities agreed that they would sign a three-year MOU as opposed to the four. And I, you know, I think maybe when Dave gave his report, he mentioned that, you know, we will be phasing that out. I don't, I don't know that, I think that it might be the way it came across. But I, I mean, it's a, it's a discussion piece. One of the things that I would like to request, and who can help us out there, whether if Chris Martin is still listening in to us or whatever. But I, I really think that I would like to see us find out just what 911 fees are collected. There must be a way to determine the total fees that are collected that come out of Clay County. I, I think that would be a good starting point to figure out what those dollars would be. Because obviously, they go into the state. Those fees go to the state, and then the state sends money back to us. And to nobody's surprise, I doubt that we're getting what we pay in back. You know, I, I think Sheriff Emting said yesterday that I think over on the Cass County side, the number is, is $2. And I think of, of all, of everything that's collected comes back. And in, in Minnesota, it's 83 cents.
Yeah, the, yeah, Cass County actually had a referendum to increase their 911 fees 50, 50 cents each. They get back, if not all, virtually all of the money that phones registered in Cass County.
Right.
Generate, they get it back and it goes, effectively, that covered the majority of the operating cost for all the entities on the North Dakota Partnership. We have a lower in 83, 84 cents. And we get, it might, and this was during the Armour discussions, so it may be dated information. I don't think it's gotten any better. We get 14%.
Yeah. And that, and that's my, but, but I think the, you know, if we're, if we're going to ask our, for example, our local legislators to help us out, I, I think that would, you know, in, in the, in the, in the case of the small cities, what we're talking about here is that they cost share about $300,000 between all of them in this whole, in this whole process for, for dispatch. You know, and, and we allocate roughly 50% of what we receive in 911 fees goes to the City of Morehead and the others goes to the rural areas. You know, we could probably solve a lot of this problem if we could just get an appropriate amount in 911 fees that come back to the county. You know, if the county was asked to take over all of the dispatch things that are currently cost shared, you know, we'd be looking at having, you know, we'd be talking about 1.5, 1.6 million dollars being added to our levy. And simple math says that'd be, before we've even started, it would be like a 5% increase on our, on our levy. And that, that's just not doable, you know. So, so we have a lot of discussions and they were, you know, the more we talked about, there was a lot of, a lot of good conversation. Sometimes it got a little bit sparky, but that's to be, that's, that's okay too. But, but anyway, I think, you know, I think there, all of those communities would be in full support of signing some sort of a letter, a request letter to see if we can improve that funding at the state level. And I think that's a good place to start. I know that there was some that were, didn't really feel that they were involved with the budget process itself. And so we, you know, we talked a little bit about the new structure of the JPA, you know, and that before that, in the old JPA, there was not even anybody in the elected position that, that approved, approved that final budget. And now that, under the new JPA system, it is all elected people who make the final decision on, on a budget. who make the final decision on a budget. So, I, you know, I think what we've talked about is inviting them when a preliminary budget is established, is first established between Mary Philippi and the executive committee, which by the way, does have rural representation on that executive committee. When that is initially started, then we could bring those small cities in so that they could see what's being proposed. And then they can see how, what that proposal might do on an annual basis to their, whether they're going to see an increase or decrease in their annual payment. But it's something, it's very important to them and there's no question about it. And we will, we will continue to work with them. Then, of course, the other piece is the, and Dave talked about, and that is the dedicated council, and we'll continue to strive to get that done. But that's not going to happen until that new building is in place. And I believe that concludes my report.
Okay. Tuesday, I too was at the Highway Tracking Committee meeting. The only thing, Don Hojald, who's here from, who's here from Terracan, he pretty much said that they're willing, I think, to participate in funding for that road. I mean, they were still looking to get some federal grants and stuff and state grants, but I think Terracan's also willing to participate. So, possibly in the near future, we can get that road going. And I guess Ross Herblay from Interstate Engineering was here too with that meeting. And I guess they pretty much got it laid out already, how, what they want to build and how it's going to be done. So, and the cost of it, which is going to be right around 10 million, I think. So, Tuesday night, I went to Holly for the West Central Rural Water District, met there at Holly. At the, Holly Township had their meeting there and there was just a couple of people that showed up. The reason we went to Holly because Holly's been the, one of the townships that have responded mostly to the survey that was put out. And Holly was the highest responding. So, but there was only several people at the meeting, but they had a lot of questions concerning it. And Rocky and Steve gave a good presentation there concerning how it's all going to work. So, I think they're interested out there in that area. So, I think it's just more fuel that we should probably include all of Clay County in our map for the West Central District. So, pretty much all was covered there. Wednesday morning, I met with Partnership for Health, the annual audit entrance meeting. And they gave us what they're going to be covering and stuff like that and what they're going to be looking at. And Carmen Barth over there and Kathy McKay were also at the meeting. And I think we're going to be covered pretty good. I mean, we had an audit last year that showed no, no problems at all. And the way it looks this year, they seem to be in pretty good shape, I think. We're, I think we're going to have a good audit again. So, hopefully everything works out okay and takes care of my meetings. And I was at the, I guess at the fair on Friday for Government Day.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I add one, going back to the dispatch discussion that we had yesterday too, there was also some discussion about, you know, there's two components. There's what is, there's what's required under mandated legislation that we provide. And then there's issues that are non-emergency. And, you know, I think there was, you know, so those, some of those things under this new format would not be covered by dispatch if they, if they want to do that. So, and rightfully so, I, you know, I think some of the mayors then asked for some, if some collection could be gathered in terms of what, what kind of, what percentage of calls that might be that would no longer, because they're going to have to come up with a different way of doing that. And, or they're going to get billed for it, you know. So, they, one way or another, they're going to pay for not, some non-emergency stuff. And so, I, you know, I think it was the mayor of Joe Worth made the comment, well, we'd really like to know what that is. Or, you know, maybe, maybe what we currently have is probably going to be financially not worth changing too down the road. So, we got those. And I want to give a shout out to Chris Martin. He did have an awful lot of good information for, presented to him, as well as Sheriff Emting. I think they emphasize the concerns about what would happen about with non-emergency things and how that would be done. So, it's part of the continued dialogue. There was, there was a suggestion out there at some point in time, should, should we as a county be looking at a taxing district for, for that purpose? And, you know, I, personally, I think that's, would be a difficult task, but I don't know that it's something that we shouldn't be able to somehow research the, how that would work. I think, you know, I think we need to, you know, in listening to them, we need to be open to some of those ideas, however difficult they might be. But I, you know, I think from a long-term standpoint, you know, I think Commissioner Everburn just mentioned that Cass County did a self-imposed deal to help with their system. And, you know, do we look at something like that? Would the county be interested in that? If it's for emergency services, I think there might be an interest there. But I think at some point in time, somebody's going to have to take the lead on researching some of these things. And I don't want to volunteer anybody.
Just on a different matter I forgot to bring up, but in acknowledging Chief Deputy Martin and Sheriff Emting yesterday, there's another thing we need to acknowledge, and that's the response that the sheriff and Chief Monroe have both led with the Moorhead Police Department and Clay County Sheriff's Office in going over to assist Fargo in dealing with their issues. Chief, or Sheriff Joyner over at Cass County's done a great job of that too. I was chief in Moorhead the last time tragedy struck when Fargo lost an officer. The loss of Officer Wallin and the serious injuries of Officer Dotus and Hawes is not something that we are used to around here. In my first career, I had more exposure to that kind of thing. It never gets easy. But right now, I hope the public is aware that we are one community. And the impact that this has on our officers and deputies on this side of the river is profound. And I want to let them know that we, as an entity of leadership in this community, acknowledge that and respect what they've done to stand up against public, an incredible public threat. The fatalities that could have occurred if this person hadn't been stopped and stopped right there, we'd be in the paper as another one of those incidents. And this was, for all intent purposes, another one of those incidents. Three people seriously hurt, a young woman that was shot at the scene. But our local, our Moorhead Police Department and our Clay County Sheriff's Office have stepped up as agencies should. And I want to send our condolences and our sympathies and our prayers to the Fargo Police Department for what happened last week. And I just want to make mention of that in the record, that we support the sheriff and his needs to address carrying on for our partner city Fargo. Thanks.
Very good.
About the advisory committee, do you want to lead that?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, a few weeks ago in June, we received through AMC, some potential committee work we could apply for, that they were asking for volunteers. And the deadline was July 10th. And I put in my application on July 10th at 11:46 PM. And anyway, long and short of it, the AMC Executive Committee appointed me to be on, it's a legislative advisory committee. It's called the Infrastructure Resilience Advisory Task Force. And the task force is created in statute to deliver objective strategies related to enhancing sustainability and resiliency of infrastructure throughout the state and responding to and mitigating effects of adverse weather events. Anyway, what a mouthful. And anyway, long and short of it, sent my application in. And mainly what I put down was, you know, the work I'd done for 37 years of soil and water and being a president with that. And mentioned about my work with Bowser over eight years with the governors. And then county and, city and county planning. And lo and behold, this morning at 10 o'clock, I got an answer that I was the guy. So, I'm going to throw it over to Steve.
Well, Paul, I just want to thank you for not procrastinating on putting that application.
Yeah, I know. I don't know why. Anyway, I was laughing at myself while I was doing it. It's like, this is really dumb. But anyway, it worked out. So, I don't know where we go from here.
Yeah, we would just, we would just want to have that added to us.
Okay, okay. And I'm looking forward to the work. I have, there's been no call to me yet about when, but my understanding might be starting a little bit in October and then, but I don't know how long it goes for or how often.
Mr. Chair, and Steve, I wonder, because that's an AMC, do we have to do a per diem deal here then? Or is he automatic, would he automatically qualify being it through its AMC?
Yeah, I believe it would be covered through their, through their committee appointments, through that.
Through what?
Through the AMC.
Okay.
We can, we'll verify that.
If not, we'll do action to add it.
But if it's okay, we'll have, add it on to my committee work.
Right now, it's, I think it should be covered under your AMC.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 11th, I participated in the Highway Tracking Committee, which has been well-covered. On the 12th, we had county management. We went through, again, 24 budget, talked about the Government Day at the fair. And again, thanks for the departments that were able to be present there. We also talked about the legislation for cannabis and the impacts, the potential impacts on the different departments. And so, we're going to be having some ongoing conversations there. On the 12th, also participated in the Highway Pre-Budget Meeting that we heard this morning. On Thursday and Friday, I was at a MACA conference. And we'd discussed, reviewed the legislation session with Matt Hilgard from AMC. We spent a significant portion on cannabis discussions. AMC has put out a kind of a timeline for counties as far as when implementation will take place. I think a big thing for our, for us to be aware of is August 1st is when possession use and cultivation is, becomes legal. And I think for our citizens to be aware that how the legislation reads is that people are able to smoke it in public. And so, it will be something that you're starting to see and most likely smell. So, we'd also talked about union negotiations. We also had, heard from Brittany Tack from the University Extension Demographics. It's always an interesting presentation from, from the extension. Right now, they currently, there's 134,000 more opening, job openings in Minnesota than we have workers, which has created a challenging, to fill those positions. She did, she wanted to make sure that we were clear is that there's been lots of discussions about the labor force. We are now back to, to labor participation that is equal to pre-COVID. And so, that's driven a lot by teen employment. Also, that women are returning to the workforce when maybe one of the family members had to decide to stay home with the kids for school to help with their, with that. But who's not coming back are the baby boomers. And so, at losing 10,000 baby boomers a day from the workforce, we're, we are going to be faced with decades of challenges here in Minnesota. One of the issues, of course, is that we've talked about in this board has heard at previous demographic presentations is having, we're not going to have enough people within the state through birth, so we're going to have to bring people into the state. The challenging thing that we heard from a, from a housing perspective is right now in Minnesota, there are only 18,000 housing, housing supplies to include single-family homes, townships, or excuse me, townhomes. And so, that, of course, is an ongoing challenge. We reviewed the MACA strategic plan. We also talked about creating a culture of strategic plan with your board. I think it was, again, one of those proud moments as we sat through and listened to some of the things that we were to learn about, are all many things that this board has already taken on. But again, just taking, making sure that as a, as a county, we continue to, continue with that strategy. We also talked about collaborating and engaging with elected officials, listening to some of the stories from some of the other counties. It made me appreciate the relationship, one that we have, one as a board and two specifically with our, our county attorney and also our sheriff, because as we've talked about, those relationships aren't always as good as you guys make it look here. So, that was a great opportunity to get together. 17th, I participated in the sheriff's department pre-budget. I think he'll be here August 1st. Yesterday morning, we also sat in the interviews for the open court-appointed commitment conservatorship contract that we've had discussions on. We were fortunate to have several qualified candidates interviewed and will have a recommendation for this board to consider next week. And then I participated in the dispatch discussion that has also been addressed by Commissioner Evergarr and Commissioner Campbell. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Milton?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Jackie Sarah had all kinds of stuff for us last week, so I expect something this week.
Okay, we're adjourned.